Want to make sure you catch your breath before we... You good? Call the meeting order.
United Nations to the flag of the United States of America. In three, four, which stands on a nation under God, indivisal, liberty and justice.
So everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
See, I'm on the corner.
Got a motion for approval? Got a second? Minutes? Second? Discussion? Hold on, some favor. Aye?
Aye.
Resolution one.
This is a resolution authorizing the chairman into a lease agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management. Some help for vehicles. Talked about this for quite a while. The... To be authorized both minutes?
Was it special meeting?
Oh, yeah, special meeting. Yeah, let's... Do what I interview. Make the motion. Got a second?
I'll second act.
Any discussion on that? Thank you, Frank. I thought the main copy of that stuck around me three pages here.
Back this. The Health Department has... This, I don't know if you want a motion to discuss first.
You guys want to do a motion first for discussion or have Bill tell you what the program is first?
Second for discussion. All right. We've been back and forth with Enterprise for a few years. Exploring the idea of leasing vehicles from them in their commercial program rather than buying, looking back and forth at what may be better with or without maintenance or just straight leasing cars. Several municipalities and other counties have done this around the state with good success. The Health Department has, I guess, volunteered to pilot this for this county, see how it works for them, help us decide whether it's appropriate for other departments. This is a fleet management agreement, but it does not include maintenance. Still be responsible for no maintenance. It would also allow Enterprise to take our current vehicles, the older ones that are listed in your... That's a separate, this next resolution, consignment agreement, but all one package. Two, they will also sell the vehicles that we have that they replace with a lease. And of course, we get proceeds from that. And also, when they pull a car, because they're the largest fleet management company all across the U.S., they have analytics to tell them when the best time in a car's life to sell. And so, they would contact us, let us know if this is the right time to sell this, say, commercial vehicle, get the best price. You can give us a brand new vehicle, pull that one, sell it, and we share in the proceeds of that. Comparing... Comparing the purchase versus lease options. And remember, this isn't like a lease that you would do privately yourself. There's no mileage gaps and stuff like this. This is commercial. When you compare the purchase options to the lease options going out the next five years, to purchase on our current fleet rotation schedule for the Health Department, it cost us $271,300. The lease option for the same number of vehicles over the next five years costs us $191,000. An average savings of $38,000 a year. So that's the financial benefit. The operational benefit is we'll no longer be driving part of our fleet that's 10, 12 years old. So there's less risk, less management, less maintenance costs, vehicles overall. Safer for our employees to be in newer vehicles. Person at the Health Department who's done a lot of the work on this is Nelson. I don't know if Nelson has any wants to say or add in opening up to questions from that.
Other than the lease options, actually seven more vehicles for the 191. Twenty-seven vehicles in that five-year span. Person is just the 20.
Any other questions? Frank?
And I know it's probably... I should know this answer myself, but no. Insurance on the vehicles. You carry that?
Yeah, and we did check into that. By the way, this was pulled from last month. Get rich, not longer to look at it, both legally and insurance. We're finding the insurance and he was able to negotiate the points he thought were important with Enterprise to change the contract language to what he felt protected us better, more in our interest. So this is all, he's also done his legal analysis. He said.
I guess, because this kind of blank agreement doesn't have any spell there. Now, it says entered in this agreement on this day of... It says on the contract here, it went for five years, but I guess I'm a little concerned. Resolution says set contract expires in 2020, subject to the new order.
Oh, that's the...
What is that?
That's the bit, yeah, that's the bit repeating back up on this.
Our two states.
Another, there's other counties that have done this and they've gone through the competitive bidding process. And they got very favorable terms. Their contract expires 2020, 2021. We are locked into that now for our agreement. So we're piggybacking off their previous. But our agreement's going to be the final.
Who's saying?
The other.
There's some...
Torium areas.
Right.
That's the contract.
But regardless of that, we're still locked in. Just the FAS.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this, can this be... Let's say this is very successful, right? Year goes by, hopefully it's more savings, it's $38,000. Because we've talked about this for two years. Can this be amended? Let's say another department wants to add on. Like all of a sudden, this is successful, this was a pilot. Five-year pilot's pretty long time. Like if another area or another department, DSS or another department wants to... Can we work that from a guy for this or can we amend this, set contract if we want to change that in future?
Yes, okay, if this doesn't work, you can still end it before the end of the five years.
So how are we out of it if it doesn't work?
If the... If another department comes on, says they want to do this, I think we'd have to go with the most advantageous piggyback that exists at that time. Say, say DSS wants to come in two years from now and that is after the expiration of the contract, we're piggybacking off of that. We have to go off the new, whatever the new best option out there, piggybacking off of.
So what would mean about the actual contract loss? Back to the piggyback.
Right. Now, Nelson, you had conversations then about how it would work if we got out of it early. It's like a ramp down.
Right. If the legislature elected to not fund it, we do have a help for that. And we could... I think, it depends on when you do it. We can actually, after the fifth year, you can extend it one more year and we own all the vehicles. At that point. Or if they needed to sell them, depends on how much was left on the lease, be responsible for that. I believe.
So I'm a little surprised that it's their vehicle, we're leasing, but you have maintenance on us, so...
Well, no, they had a price for maintenance if we wanted to pay for them to cover the maintenance, but I think it's much cheaper for us to be in your house.
And the other issue that came up when we looked into that is where they have contracts to do maintenance. Sort of further away or not all the garages locally were on their programs or business local. And because it was less expensive, we opted out of the maintenance portion. But there should be, our maintenance cost should go down for brand new vehicles.
I think we had, I'm happy to see this gets started. Definitely both favor of it. In my mind, we still have a big maintenance issue. Not issue, but... Fleet maintenance management question that needs to be answered across the spectrum. That's something else that needs to be brought in.
I agree.
Thank you.
Anything else? Favor say aye?
Aye.
Close?
Form two is the second half of this is the consignment agreement. It was in your package, but it also got passed around. Older vehicles would be consigned to Enterprise for them to sell for us. And then again adds, if you're going to rotate vehicles out, they can do that as well. But these are the older vehicles that they will, they will sell for us. Hope is that they get better prices than we were going up, paying them up on our local auction. These are, these are marketed to their mission.
Motion to discussion. So any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the third resolution, this third part of this is just a budgetary modification. Need to do that to make this happen. Which leaves a savings in our 2019 budget, but not mistaken.
Motion?
I'll move.
Any discussion? Favor please say aye?
Aye.
Close?
Just hoping that like after the sale of the vehicles and things have gone. Hopefully there's a pilot of some sort. I mean, I'm not going to be here next year, but somebody, this should be continually somebody reported so that committing's up to speed on savings and sale of vehicles. Everybody's...
Right, because this...
Understand where we're going if this is considered a pilot.
Absolutely, and I'll be in touch with Nelson to see how this is going because if it is working well, I'm going to want to look at it.
Mail chain?
Yeah.
Sure? Very good. Muting vehicle assignment.
Yeah, we bring a request here and three county vehicle for commuting. These three staff, two nurses and one nurse agent, three of them all in hospice. As you know, hospice nurse, they're covered countywide. They have countywide coverage and they are on frequent on-call duty and regardless of weather and as they go out. So we, traditionally, historically, everybody, every nurse in the pro, in the hospice program, they, their vehicle include the community. So we brought this here and ask you your permission to allow them to bring county vehicles, stay overnight at home. This convenient for them and also more key is ready. Shorten the time, answer patients' needs and go quickly. Instead of drive own vehicle to county office or county other property around the county and then switch vehicle and then go. Waste too much time. And, yeah, and we put it here in the yes quicker response and the county wide the coverage and the frequent on-call. These are the three reasons.
How many nurses is there? We have names.
These are two nurses, one nurse agent.
Oh, two, so three all total?
Yeah. We were requesting here. Yeah.
A lot of times those end the day. It could be the northern part of the county. And if they have a county car and they don't have permission to take it home and they live in Blast High or Mexico, they have one of them, they drive all the way to the county because they know it's for go, pick up their own personal vehicle. So it does do cost savings for the patient.
So I guess the only question I really have with this is I went through this, worked with the county, taken home, parked at the airport because I was five, six minutes away from the county. People never return there. Their physical home locations, are there any at near another county still?
One does live in Mexico.
That could be part of DSS.
It could.
But this...
You get called out to a hundred and forty and go to a...
Interesting.
I know, I, but there's a lot of reasons why having an anger call is that way, but I accept.
One is middle road.
One is middle road, but then it's still driving to the county to transfer vehicles and their own personal vehicle. And if they are on call for a weekend, that's a little much to ask. And I, it's a little much to ask them to go all the way up to the county if they're in a vehicle.
Is there a reason why they can't drive their personal car to the emergency call to the patient? Is the, is the county vehicle equipped with equipment and medical supplies? Or their personal car is not?
Well, it could be if we're in Tampa. Then that becomes very costly.
And also, we needed to realize long time, winter time. And if you switch your car winter time, take more time to keep the vehicle up. And also, into midnight at night, safety is another concern. They drive more mileage to switch it.
They might start at a home at eight thirty in the morning and plus. They may end at home at four o'clock. And home car. And then... No, it's beautiful. It's beautiful. Sir, God is beautiful and don't get it wrong. I agree. But it is time consuming that they be doing other places.
You need to get one of them forward as I was on up there.
And our home health aide actually has a case that starts at seven o'clock in the morning, a couple of times a week, getting contacted.
How much you add minutes?
You're in Chantel, correct me, but I believe they also carry a substantial number of supplies.
In the county vehicle.
So you're transferring them to find.
Two things. Don't we already have some people that take county vehicles?
We do, one that's right, one's right off.
Because I know one lives over on South Fourth Street. Now, so with that being said, I have no problem with this with hospice. Sorry. You know, you want hospice, you don't want that person to get the call at seven o'clock and then have to travel 20 minutes to go get a car and then another half hour to the place where they could have been in 15 minutes. Okay? I am one of, supportive of this. Highly recommend it. That's just me.
The only one tip we request is for is...
I could actually have to, I'm a person of parks at a county facility, so I have to go and get mine before I come on call or anytime like that. One of the biggest things is in the winter time. If I didn't have a truck, a lot of times I wouldn't have been getting out of the parking area. Because county hits those, you had an active storm, they don't hit them in the beginning. So you're kind of, you're going to get it there, get it. The mice are being a bee and it's never first one's fly.
About someone who is a dear boy and was my first person. Frank, I agree with your comments completely. I just think that we've got three pieces of paper in the packet, not a lot of explanation and need to be clarified.
And they are, they're all new staff that are doing wonderful.
Might move that we allow them to take all three of the cars.
I'll flag it.
Any further discussion? Favor please say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Take care. Well, Chang Chang, we run all the time.
Now, let's...
See if you're on. I liked your video. You're right up. Melper liked it, knew you on top of your... Have you seen it? Just now. He's a star. Go ahead.
Yes, Chantel come to talk about health event and I want to take this opportunity. Thanks, everyone, every legislators and supporter to accept the stated grant. And yes, Chantel will make a more broader review of our activity and provision in the following years. Go ahead.
So most of the information I'm going to share will be in the packet there, but I thought I'd provide that when we have a meeting to run this. So as Chang Chang said, he wanted me to come and talk a little bit about the program and what the purpose of funding. Give you some information on the outcome and then back to our one area should have been looking at the program. The first couple of slides talk about the positive outcomes that helping families offer to families, individual families and the community. Our enrolled families seen improved success in school by 50%. Fifty percent less likely to repeat the first grade. The children that are enrolled, 70% are more likely to score above grade level in the first grade. There's a significant improvement in home learning. There's a 26% reduction in seeing a special education program by age of seven and a 23% reduction in program or source vocabulary tests, which are for children preparing for work and whatever. Other outcomes that the program can provide is improved family functioning and that is seen as parents have advanced their education on the program about home. So we're seeing families getting a GEDs or actually completing the program at school. Parents are making better use of community resources and they're delaying substance, not pregnancy. So that's a reason why it takes a lot. And my mothers are also reporting with substances, alcohol and drugs. We are seeing improved birth outcomes and improved child health. The program demonstrates a 48% reduction in role birth weight deliveries. So we see a cost savings there on children that one, they have less health needs because they're actually healthier weight. And overall child's health is improved and return of mortality increased. The next slide provided with information specific to the savings, which I mentioned some of those. One of the biggest things is that by reducing child maltreatment by 50%, we're actually saving, I don't know if it's the last number that I got was 212,000 per case of child maltreatment. So there's immediate costs by treating that use of maltreatment and there's long-term costs that we save on because most families are now not going to be at a increased risk of having comorbidities like COPD or heart disease or obesity. So those are huge savings, not just early on, but then over long run. We see decreased cost of foster care and the use of resources, much of the savings. And then improved socioeconomic status. Specific numbers that I obtained from helping on the website show that there's $1,000 saved to serve a family during pregnancy. So that is actually recovered before a child born, if they are born at a mother work rate. So just that reducing their personal work rate, saving a thousand dollars before they even had that. And then months with the history of CPS reports, there's a return of $3 for every $1 investment that the child is something. Currently, our program has 12 families enrolled. We received 134 surveys to date and 131 of those were positive. So we're getting appropriate referrals and our outreach is working. We actually have completed 65. We have received, completed 65 surveys and 63 of those were positive. So the surveys that we're doing are considering their ability to be, that's a significant. Simple parents, those with administrative job use, those with low income, most of them are creating a pair. So I get asked this question often, why are enrollment so low? If they've got 134 strays, why are, why do we only have 12? And that's where the child sort of dropped in form there. So there's a lot of research out there on the essence and our childhood experiences. That study specifically shows that most people that are exposure to traumatic events early on are at a higher risk throughout the lifespan. The history of exposure to traumatic events can lead to difficulty in coping. Can lead to about coping mechanisms such as substances and overeating and such factors. There's a significant relationship between adverse and healthy and helping that program targets them by building their focusing on the social, emotional, environmental things. Connect families with nutritional resources, financial resources, health resources, connecting them with health providers and other support systems that enable them to decrease their risk factors. Any questions?
What is, what is our goal? I know we have a team, but this is our, this is what kind of Health Department's have a goal. Reaching a certain amount that we can handle, say, like...
Yep, we recently received a grant for 512,000 backdoor spending program and that is up to six.
Currently, it's 20 days. Currently, we're first through three years pilot that we set had. And but this, I think this part also, I came from Chantel and show our program activities here. And we started 2017 and this, we've just finished second quarter of 2019 here. And so you can see, and like this, and we, at the beginning, we're slow. And really, after a year, we really bump up and very high. And then we have this drop from second quarter to third quarter. This year, really, Chantel and Vera, add on if you probably know that same. And the problem to maintain this 20 family, one is this is a voluntary program. And some family, yes, want to hide their skeleton in the closet and don't want outside people coming. It's difficult. The second difficulty is really, we need a stable staff. The reason we saw drop is because we lost a staff and we lost her whole family under her. And four or five families, right? So this, this, it, these three years for us, it's a bigger learning process. And so gradually, gradually, you can see, now we have 15, very close. And so gradually, gradually, you can see now we have fifteen, very close to there. And these, these are thirteen, thirteen is, uh, we, this light bar is we screened.
Right.
Yeah. And so they're, they're going to end, after screening, we make a decision to end our program or refer to other county service agencies.
The main part of this is really trying to get people engaged and accepting our services. Just because it's free doesn't mean that people want it. And when they're infected by trauma, then we have to trust people. So we are really working hard to try to build a relationship with them and get them to buy it.
Do you get them?
Well, aside from getting the screens and then going to meet them, we're able to offer small incentives. So like Tilk and I, we might be able to bring in a set of baby models, some, something as simple as soap is really a big deal. We have some other items that we're handling, those are information that people have made. We didn't receive a thousand dollars from the Rural Health Network to be able to buy small incentives, you know, like things at a hundred and twenty-five dollars, maybe a gift card for ten dollars to Subway or something like that. I think the biggest thing is creating that bond of trust and that's where the training and the education, the skills from the staff really come in. That's why we lost so many families is because we had this nurse that moved on to another position outside the county that built that trust relationship with family. And they rely on them a lot, they text them, they, it's pretty amazing and a very intensive program.
The reason I, the reason I asked that question is I, again, this is another program similar, I want, it's not similar, but in the way that it's going, okay? It's, it's in that. What we do, okay, eliminate, well, at some point in time, eliminate the cost, major cost, which is in DSS, okay? I see the children, okay? One of the children, uh, when I was out, uh, when pulled, passed away from cystic fibrosis just today. But those are the kind of things, healthy family would have helped and loved because I know that when I first started picking this child up, his brother's older brother also had cystic fibrosis, but they're sitting there smoking in the house. As you can tell, because when you come up, the kids smell like smoke, you sit, parents coming out with cigarettes, right? Then the younger brother starts traveling with him and then while I was around, totally passed away. But those are the types of things that we need to get to and that's why I'm asking, how are you getting to them? And I know that there's probably things that we can't do, but if we could tie it in with and say, okay, DSS, you know, if your family's going to be a member and get benefits from us, okay, which a lot of it is healthcare and, you know, then you have to be a participant in the healthy families and that way we eliminate the cost, we save taxpayers, both state and countywide, millions of dollars because you're talking about saving three dollars for every dollar spent. And I know it's not easy to get them in. And if they're not forced in, they will not go in a lot of times, okay? So I commend you on your job. I hope that the five hundred thousand dollar grant that you get is able to get those parents in there. There'll be less people going home, not sick, going home sick from schools, okay? And that's all I hope for. Thank you very much for your work.
Chin, I agree with Frank, I think probably tough to say like anything, just get your foot in the door, right? So, but I imagine once they get their foot in the door, once they hear about how this person from collaboration, like we were saying, we don't know, we don't know, neither do we, right? So you have just a conversation with somebody else who's plugged in, opens the door, then they get to see the opportunities that are out there possibly, that's a positive thing, not just a negative, right? So it's a negative conversation, so couldn't be happier with the grant and the direction of all of us, I think it's just what's we're kind of, congratulations on that. Great, I think if anything, you should come back and say, we need help creating the incentive to get our foot in the door. Because I think once you get in there, they just open the box, we can see how many opportunities there are, but maybe there's some other way we can help them and get that incentive.
Answering Mr. Castilla's question, how we got it and before came and we looked at our number, if I recall correctly, since March two thousand seventeen till now, we will refer more than one hundred and sixty clients. These clients were referred by over twenty agencies around the company. And this is the way we got these people. And this, this expansion grant really, one is allow us to serve more people and the other is really give us resources and do more outreach work. In the past, just Chantel, this, this is her single person show and by collaboration, we can reach more families, we can reach more health and the social service agencies in the company. And I hope, yes, the key is really still back to your direction, collaboration and our department, our this program really to collaborate with county agencies and residents, families and experience.
Is it good?
I have one more thing to add. Our common healthcare worker would love to have someone.
Try it, ended up in the hospital.
I'll take you back.
Take your. So the, the next training, let someone know and try it again, but that wasn't going to work very well with my new staff.
You're keeping that collaborative effort with all the new new partners. Yeah, with that means we're scheduled for month-long periods of talks with, that looks twenty-three different agencies.
Still up? Okay, still, not to me.
You know what, let's go right to the video.
Let's go to video, okay.
Yeah, we'll skip the other and we'll keep it short, how's that?
Okay.
Autograph.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's why I want to skip the others, so there's. Wild animals. This first video is, we had a.
You heard correctly, a fourteen-year-old was petting a skunk at her Oswego home. It's something public health assistant Christopher Masuka hasn't seen much of in his thirty-three year career.
Well, he walked up to a skunk that was in her backyard, uh, the skunk approached her and she picked it up, took it home.
Masuka says he then had to arrange to get the skunk, put it down and send it to a lab to get tested. One day later, it came back positive for rabies.
So then I had to start the fourteen-year-old on treatment and again, luckily, nobody else was exposed to it.
This was just one of the more memorable cases he has witnessed on the job. He remembers another situation that could have been avoided.
Unfortunately, the woman, you can hear clearly going, get away, skunk, get away, instead of pulling her dog inside.
To avoid getting bitten by rabid animals, officials say it's best not to get close.
If you've got a skunk that's, that's coming near you or approaching you, more than likely there's, there's something going on with that skunk and you don't want to be there. Uh, don't try to approach it, skunks just don't come up to you.
And Masuka's boss says, pet owners should make sure their pets have all of their shots.
If you have a pet, it needs to be vaccinated.
In his near than thirty years working with rabid animals, William says cases are not specific to home location.
It's everywhere, it's everywhere in New York State, it could show up anywhere.
And if you or your pets start to feel sick?
Once you start, if you start showing symptoms, there's nothing you can do, pretty much.
Okay, so.
No, we'll, we'll skip that part so we can keep it short, I'll talk about numbers and.
Okay, you're talking numbers, is, is it in the slide or not in the slide?
No, I got everything ready, so we don't, we don't.
Yours, okay.
So, uh, the video was taken by a girl from Oswego State who's doing a final exam on rabies and she actually works for Channel Seven in Watertown and come down and interviewed us, again, interviewed Chris for like forty-five minutes and I saw about ten.
Sure.
Yeah, so she did get an A-plus on it, so that's a, that's a plus as well, so. But, uh, the, the two stories that were on there, the first one, the skunk here in the city of Oswego, fourteen-year-old, the animal control got called and they went out there to pick up the skunk and the fourteen-year-old's laying on her bed with the skunk on her chest still, just petting the skunk. And she picked it up, brought it in, we sent it out to be tested, sure enough, come back positive. Of course, after the second shot, we find out the girl was shipped off to North Carolina, so then we had to bigger agents of them as well to get the second two shots. Um, the second video with the dog being attacked by a skunk, unfortunately, that dog had to be put down because it wasn't vaccinated and the woman taped the whole thing, I mean, that was just a short piece of it. The dog had chased the skunk all over, or the skunk chased the dog all over the place and she had several times when she could have brought it in and instead just continued to tape and unfortunately, the dog had to be put down, had never been vaccinated. The skunk, I was called out to that on call and the skunk was still there an hour after that incident and you, you'd never know when there was a skunk there because it's spread. So with skunks, that's one thing, they, they usually don't spread if they're rabid, first thing when it was attacked, so. But we'll get to some numbers, our calls this year compared to last year, right on, we're like six below what we were last year, is three hundred and eighty-one calls, treated people, uh, we've only treated thirteen as compared to twenty-one last year. Positives are up from last year, last year we only had three at this time, this year we have eleven already. And one thing about our calls, last year in May, we had thirty-eight calls just on bats alone. This year in May, we only had one. So the numbers are down with bat calls, but they're up with the terrestrial ones, so we're getting more there. All the several towns have had positives, animals had two, Sandy Creek one, Oswego City's had one, Williamstown, I mean, it's all spread out, Scruple, Grand East, Scriba, New Haven. We currently have three that are out there from the city that the USDA sent in force today that if I had to guess, at least two of them are going to come back positive. One key thing, uh, canine rabies is no longer the number one strain of rabies to affect humans in the United States now, it's now rabies, or not rabies, it's now bat strain of rabies. So bat has taken over canine, which is a stronghold for the United States because canine has been the number one for a long time down in the southern states, so to make a switch. Uh, we've had four clinics this year and vaccinated over a thousand animal animals, so we're still on, online over last year as far as I know. That's pretty much it. Any questions for anybody?
I just want to comment on what we've heard. Think the general public, the perception that we might have one or two people who can be treated for this, I think most people are shocked to have many people on this county that aren't treated.
Yeah. Was the girl, was she, you said she got treated?
Yes.
Is that preventative or did she get bitten or something?
No, because she had the skunk on her chest, you know, if that had any saliva from the skunk that gotten into you, something on her brain, she wasn't actually bitten by it.
But so was it preventative, like they were, you better do this.
Right. And it's basically what we call secondary exposure, having, getting bitten or scratched by, because of the closeness of the, uh, the face and so. And one other thing is we, we've been working quite closely with USDA the past couple of years, um, which enables us to send out a lot more animals without cost to us. And what they do is if we have one that we feel is suspect of rabies, we can call them up and they'll come and pick that animal up, which in turn, the way it helps us is in the past, we haven't been always able to send out every animal. So we have some people that maybe will get upset with us because, you know, we can't send out the one that's sitting in their yard, we don't know where it is or why it's there and it's rabid. But in this situation with USDA now, the past couple of years, we're able to give them resolve because they're able to send it out for us. They're doing a program where they're trying to bring back the rabies drop made in some county. So I talked to Dan Morton today, he's the head of it, he still thinks it's about two to three years out before that will happen, but it could definitely happen again.
It used to do that, used to be part of that program.
Yes.
Years ago, it ended.
Yeah.
The viral bug and sort of flew in the airplanes and drove around through the Bates.
Through Bates, yeah. So it's a possibility they could be bringing that back to try to eradicate it. Don't do it after three years while I retire. If I still need a job, I'll hear it, yeah.
Okay. I, yeah, I, I, I want to take this opportunity since, say thanks to, uh, in the ready, he, he been heavily involved in this wild animal and the rabies and he answered phone calls and many, many times, right? And even our staff weekend, finish primary investigation and after weekend, yes, pile on his desk and do the final cleanup and really do the required job. And thank you. And also I want to take this up to the same legislators and support to give him a promotion last year. Thank you. So my, my report, the next, still I give Chris and because part of my report today is disease and about mosquitoes and Chris, every year handled it for so many years and about mosquito surveillance this year and let me pass it to Chris and I will report it as I plan, how about that? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, well, I just wanted to hit on the highlights, we are in our fifth week of surveillance, we have our traps spread out geographically around the county. We have seventeen sites currently, which is up, it's actually one more than we usually have, we've got sixteen, actually we have fourteen because we had people that moved, you know, people wouldn't give us permission, a lot of, send letters now, ask for permission, they ignore us. We just, it's kind of a pain, don't know why they can't just answer, they don't want us there to say no, but at least you know you go somewhere else, just leave to hang. But this year we're up, we're back, we got two new sites, we just started this week. One of the sites in Central Square was one of our really good disease, new tripoli virus showed up there. But that spot has grown up to the point where it's not shaded enough, the mosquitoes don't go there anymore, we haven't set in a single pool from that spot this year yet. So Dr. Oliver went looking around and he found a new spot, in time twelve, just north of the village of Central Square, which she feels will be good, so she just set it up yesterday, so we'll find out. We had a trap stolen this year, I don't know why, anybody want one of the light traps? Somebody took one, because the kids, we got new kids, they tend to mark every step of the way into the woods where they go hide them, so they find them, they would think somebody must have just followed the trail of breadcrumbs to the trap and look at it, probably because they, you know, you get in these places, people go hunting stuff and they think somebody's stealing my hunting spot, gotta get rid of that. I think that's one of the, one of the places we lost is because somebody, somebody's hunting spot, you got worried about them doing something there. So they just completely ignored our requests to go to their site. We have the resting boxes, black boxes, the buildings and grounds makes for us, so we don't, we keep the cost down. There's ten boxes per site, there's eight of them, eight light trap sites, which that's just a, that's got stolen, I don't, they probably thought they could hang in the backyard doing the bug zapper, because that's, it's like a mini bug zapper. It's got a light, a fan, a cooler hangs over the top if we throw dry ice, it attracts mosquitoes, they pick up on that, they see the light in the trap, they go in the fans. They pick up on that, they see the light in the trap, they go and the fan sucks them down into the catch bag. And our people go grab in the mornings on Monday, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they pick them up. Mondays and Wednesdays, we go to the box sites. They take them back to the bug station, sort them all out, set, they set them up in what they call pools, which is just a little test tube, it's clearly not much bigger than that, but be, yeah. They cram up to sixty mosquitoes in these little tubes and they ship them to all of them. On Friday, a deep drive, we share driving two weeks with a night at college. This week is the holiday, where if it's our turn to drive, we're taking Anadaga and Madison County mosquitoes. They can't ship on holiday, we gotta get them there, so. They all come to our bug station for the training. Every year the state health department, Dr. Oliver, Dr. Howard, do a training for everybody within the region. And this year they had Clinton County sent some way for training, they have our needs department. So they had fifteen people crammed into our bug station, learning the ins and outs of mosquito surveillance and ID and all that. So it's one time at, I'm sure. Sent in a hundred and thirty-eight tools as of last Friday. Right, another forty this week. Numbers are, they started out slow, they were so cool and damp, the last couple of weeks they, they picked up. You expect to find lots of, they're finding lots of, so. Usually something bad's gonna happen anytime from the, late August or July and the middle of August is when it starts, so. You start getting there every week, your fingers crossed, waiting for the results of the previous week to see what's gonna happen.
Okay, my report and the first report and this, yes, this is an award for our hospice program. And you can see this, this is, uh, na- nationwide assessment, assess, uh, client's, uh, patient's family satisfaction. And this time, yes, our program in the, among the top twenty satisfaction in the nation. And I remember two thousand and sixteen, when Barrow was director and we also got the national award like this, was at the top of five percent, all right?
Yep, next year.
So, yes, next year we will work for, go back to five percent, the top five percent, okay?
But twenty percent is enough.
No, twenty percent, yes, it's already, already very good.
Yes.
Yeah. So, uh, this, this is my report and, uh, our award and, uh, disease, uh, disease reporting following, following, uh, Chris and he finished, uh, mosquito and uh, let me briefly report to you two things. One is needles. Needles are still active nationwide and it's still active in, uh, downstate New York. Because we, we can say, yes, it's a, not active, we need a CDC define two incubation period. Needles incubation period is twenty-one days. And so two incubation period, we have forty-two days without, uh, active new case, new case, and then we can claim, yes, it's not active. So, so far still active and this started last year, September, October till now. And nationwide, over a thousand, uh, ne- needles cases reported. And, uh, this is really small, small portion of unvaccinated people and catch imported virus and spread it, keep spreading this. This sure is a concern and, uh, state health department, the standard requirement and everybody working health department. Uh, disregard direct patient interaction or not direct patient interaction, negative, uh, immuni- immunization, uh, verified immunization. And Barra led, led the efforts and reviewed everybody, uh, and the health department. And now everybody followed the state requirement, right? And they say either get shots or, uh, get the, put on the drug to test the type. So we're, we're complying with the state requirement. Sure, needles is a big issue. And, uh, this year, yes, ticks still, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a bigger thing. And, uh, we don't have data, we don't have local data. And, uh, this is my personal experience and, uh, yeah, I will touch this later. And, uh, one night I went to Plaski and their first farmers market and I put, uh, our education materials there. My purpose when there was promoted their, uh, walking trail in the, in the Plaski Village, one in the center of the, uh, village park in the desert next to the Salmon River. And we put it there and so I, I, I brought the immunization, walking, physical activity, healthy eating, uh, immunization I mentioned and ticks, bats, all this information. Most of the people pick up was tick information. And the tacos people, this go beyond, uh, Plaski and this year my several outreach, so many people say, oh, I saw you Chris ticks and my neighbor, I myself get the ticks, so. But we don't have data. And according to, I think Chris or somebody sent me, uh, uh, a video, a TV clip to me and stated SUNY Environment House College and they did a study at the, uh, Green, what? Green Point State Park, Green Lakes, Green Lakes, oh yeah, Green Lakes State Park did a little study. And sixty percent of tick carry Lyme disease, very scary. And so this, for our county, this still is important and like previous years we have done. And we, before the school end, and we send the information to schools and remind the parents in the summertime, check their kids, check their pets, check themselves after they have outdoor. And this is really prevention, prevent the tick on, tick bites is the key. And also very interesting is, yes, I reported to you, uh, end of May, we had a professor from University of Massachusetts came to talk about, uh, tick bone disease and he's really an expert. And I think so far, yes, I saw he's the best expert I have encountered on tick bone disease. And his talk was great and, uh, but the attendance was low. And I feel exciting was he sent an email after the talk and he said he planned to come back next year and hope to get more people and I'm thinking, yes, I will protect the SUNY Oswego or their Rice Creek Center and see whether we can put a, a place and track more people. And very interesting, also his email to me and he attached spreadsheet. And from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen, and his lab received nine, uh, nine ticks from Oswego County. From Oswego County, nine ticks and four ticks carried Lyme disease. So this, yes, still it's a big work and it's harder for us, a local health department to do something. But yes, I think that what we can do best is really promote messaging, promote prevention messaging. So this is my brief disease report. Any questions? Just Martin, I'll keep, carry on in the talking about, uh, collaboration. And yes, and I, 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 I like to, uh, talk about collaboration because this, 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 this is the beauty of Oswego County and a well-natured community and the people hands in and hands together, arm in arm together, everything's done. And here is a, a few, uh, example in the recent activity I want to share with you. And, uh, yes, you may remember, uh, early this year, state health department came to Forden School District and audited students, uh, unvaccinated kids and, uh, Oswego, not Oswego, Forden School District, busload, sent a busload of students to our health department. Get their vaccine, update them and some vaccine, the second shots. And this time Forden School District worked with our preventive and they had their students organized and our nurse was chief for the school district and they get it. Most of the kids get the second shots and some use them, you've done first shots. This really collaboration and we get kids vaccinated and get them protected. And this, and, uh, yeah, and, uh, another thing, uh, I reported to you and we had, uh, needle littering, we found it in the county early this year and this is end of spring. And I, I brought this because it's a huge amount, over a hundred needles. And I brought this to, uh, about the health and asked their direction. And their direction gave me was, uh, send out a, uh, a press release and a reminder residents how to properly dispose these needles and other medical shots. And I brought this to you, reported to you. And I worked with Royal Foundation, result worsened. And, uh, yes, after draft and I sent this draft to relevant department in the county, interconnect for their review. And then, uh, tourism, Jen had the final review and we sent out. And a resident, I forgot from which time, had sent, sent an email to Jen and they, yes, about our efforts to let people know how to properly dispose this, uh, medical shop, shops. And really our message is working and our collaboration is working. This is just one example. And I, I think this, this, uh, public and the private department should, it, it is a very, 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 very good one. And, uh, and, and as a, uh, collaboration example, it's still like, yes, included, uh, Zeke just mentioned and the collaboration with USDA and the national, uh, organization to work in the county. And our another efforts, collaboration with the, at the national is, uh, this outcome. And this is by nature, National Association of City and the county health official. And they did a tick survey and our county, uh, Environment House responds to their survey. And our county is one of nine counties in the nation participating in this survey. And this survey outcome really, uh, I, I particularly look at, it's really local health department, short of resources to fight these ticks. This is not just in the state, it's nationwide. And really I hope Congress will do something and support, support our local efforts. It's important. And another collaboration I want to mention is our local and we have our, uh, environment health senator. And went to, uh, Riley Elementary School, their, their, uh, school career day. And he presented there and the environment health and educated kids, you can see all different things. This takes mosquitoes, this wild animal here and a lot of healthy, uh, drinking, waters, safe, these things. Our, our department staff take all opportunity we job and, uh, this, this is really very good and, uh, like most of the reasons why I help. I, I reported to you and our health educator went to Father Hand's Family Services. And these clients, uh, gives them a six months, or six week, six week long, uh, six week long, uh, chronic disease self-management program. Because most of the, uh, patients, they have, uh, drug issues also have chronic diseases. And this program at the beginning really, yes, some patients just put their, put their arm in the seat there or you want to sit there. But after two, three sessions, they put you, uh, for the, off and the listen. And the last session, they say, oh yeah, I want you to be back and I will come back. This really, other agencies open the door and we, our program, our staff more outreach. And after finish, not the end, after finish this six-week session, our health educator, uh, now, uh, go to Catholic charity and, uh, we have a six month, six, six weeks, uh, program with them. And this time mostly focused with, with, uh, young kids and teenagers and talking about sun, spring, sun safety, hygiene, traffic safety, dental hygiene, nutrition, all these cover six weeks long. So this, uh, between optimization, uh, collaborations. And, uh, I, I think that's, that's all. Any questions?
Well, I, you know, you just, you, you went over quick there, you know, in the town of twenty in the country, that hospice program, you just narrate that to them real fast.
Oh, you narrate too fast, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I mean, you know, this is a program that four years ago, they were gonna, you know, they were looking to get rid of, okay? And here they went to fit and now young, young lady, you know, we're at twenty. But I'm telling you something, to get recognized nationally and the organization is gonna get, you know, we're looking to help them because they're costing us too much money. And I want to tell you, thank you very much for what you've done.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Thank you. That's odd, I, I just had a pick on them.
I live in the middle of the woods and we're constantly talking about ticks, that's always helping, but it's, we're gonna pull them off one on one. I took a walk on Christmas and one of them turned out to be a summer shoulder to came back. A few hours later, one of my sisters, what's that, what's that? We're plucking one, we want to see freak out, pull them off those kids in a short period of time. I re- I heard you say something about the rabies drop earlier. They come up the, the thing, the deer eat the thing and the lime and it kills the tick. And in the future, they gotta come up with something else because I know the deer will.
Kind of like an advantage in what I've taught.
Tick, we keep talking about around the table, just saying there's gotta be something else, like some deer, the transformers. I, they're all over, all over the place, wherever they are, you got the sweet ticks, which is everywhere. And just heard you say the rabies dropping, come up with some deer dropping, they, they got studies where they take, go to, even the mice are the primary, oh yeah, factor for bacteria. Deer just make more ticks, they can't get, they don't get viruses from the deer. But the deer's big, large in obviously and they can make a whole bunch of meat jacks that they're going to have the mice. I've seen, thanks much of the directors' captains last fall, they had different bait stations, mice go into them. Something will brush out and they get, it's like a dog's food collar kind of thing, whatever pesticide. Same thing with deer, they go into these stations and rub on something and it's, it'll kill the jacks. So they're, they're looking at things like that, but I hope, I just, I like to get our perspective. In the time when you want to get kids in your town and drop them, hope to get outside. Could be any time worse if we keep showing up here, you know, triple E's and the I and ticks and it's like, dude, all right, back inside. Trying to get them outside. Thanks for coming.
Hey, one last question. Did Dr. Newp make a decision not to have the board help me Friday?
No, we, we, we said that we won't, don't have meeting this Friday, but the following Friday, twelfth, I haven't made a decision, have a talk with someone to, obviously, we'll let you know.
I know you all were anxious to go there. Thought I'd ask, let's call it a test. Okay, anything else? I need the appropriate motion.
Move it.
Wait a second. On the paper?
Uh, hello?